So, good evening and thank you for being here. I was just telling Mike that I was really appreciative of his coverage in the call because we try, we don't set specific times for the town hall meetings, but I usually like, I don't want to make this sound the wrong way, but I like to set them at times where there's some real questions going on. If my phone's ringing a lot and people are asking specific questions and think, "Well, it'll be a good time to have a town hall meeting to get out there and talk about whatever those things are." That really hasn't been the case since, really since January. Things have just been kind of calm in regards to questions coming in, but I've always vowed to have at least three of these a year. And so, I really didn't want to prolong a second one in hopes of having a third one. And as you probably know, we're about to enter into our reorganization meeting for the Board happens next month, April, and we're leading up to an election with the Board of Education. So, I didn't want to get too far into March and interfere with that. Plus, we're on spring break next week. So, that's why we're here tonight, and I'm hoping that you've brought some good questions that I can address and that can create the agenda. Just to give you, I see a lot of familiar faces that have been at my town hall meetings before, but just to give you a little bit of background on the concept, I've been in the Melville School District for 12 years. I've been superintendent for three. In all my years leading up to being superintendent, the district tried various ways to engage the community, and to me, it didn't always work. We got a lot of really good people out that would roll up their sleeves and do really good work for us, but it didn't always bring, we saw a lot of the same faces, really supportive people, and we weren't really challenged too much in those sessions. So, as I went around talking to critics coming into the superintendency, a lot of them said they didn't have a real interest in coming to Board meetings. They didn't have a real interest in coming to those traditional community engagement pieces. So, my attempt was to create a town hall forum not in our schools. Trust me, it's hard to not have a meeting in our nice auditorium that we've recently completed, but I want to stay true to what we said, that we would have meetings outside of the school district in various venues. We've been in churches, we've been in venues like this, and that's what we'll continue to do. Again, we decided on three of them per year. I don't bring an agenda to these meetings. I really hope that the questions that are asked will create the agenda, and I kind of prepare a little bit of filler, a little bit of soft shoe in case I just end up with a time where everybody's just looking at me. But hopefully, I have some things. And I'm going to actually start off by just a few, not really huge things going on, but just to kind of fill you all in on some things that have been a little bit pressing. I did get quite a few questions, mostly from parents in the district, about the extensive snow days that we've had this year. That's been a hot topic. I'm happy to tell you that we actually are a district with some of the fewest snow days. Many other districts have a whole lot more than we did. We ended with, ended, ended with seven, and many of the larger districts in the area, including the Rockwoods and the Parkway's, were up there nine. Some of them further north had 10, some over in Illinois had 13. And by state statute, we are required to make up our snow days. And one of the questions we would get from folks is, "How come you don't build snow days into your calendar?" Well, we really do. We just build them in on the end of the calendar. So, if you look at the Board-approved published calendar, it just has 10 additional days at the end in green that are denoted as make-up snow days. We try to do that for folks as they plan vacations, so they can see, and we hope that they stay cognizant of those days and wait to schedule their vacations. And we realize that some think, "Well, we're never going to use 10 snow days in St. Louis." But obviously, we gave that a run for the money this year. We're never required to make up more than 10 days, and we are required to make up the first six days, and then we have to make up the seventh day, and then every other day up to 14, we don't have to make up. So, in other words, we make up seven, we don't make up eight. We make up nine, we don't make up 10, so on and so forth. And if you calculate that out, that's the 10 total days that you have to make up. After that, you're forgiven by the state. And of course, that does affect us. We are reimbursed from the state through what we call our weighted average daily attendance, and so, we try to keep those days if all possible. However, if you look at the analysis, that they do reduce the calendar to try to make that not impact the bottom line. So, anyway, we still make the decisions based on what's best for kids. So, something that did happen recently, that we decided to check with our parents and get their opinion on, and I feel really good that we did that because we had a great response. With ending at seven when it did, that means our last day of school has to be Monday, June the 2nd. And June the 2nd is the day after our graduation ceremonies, and it's only a half-day because it's a finals day. So, I'm obviously very, very worried that we will not have good attendance that day. I can tell you about 1,000 students that won't be there, and those are seniors who got their diploma the Saturday before. And I think also, there will be plenty of families who maybe plan vacations right out of the school year who say, "You know, it's a half-day. We're going to justify missing that day." And I just think our attendance would be atrocious. The only real day, a couple of years ago, we contemplated altering our spring break for some make-up days, and we really got a lot of negative feedback on that. I mean, people were angry that we were even thinking about it, and I think I understand that. I think that there's a lot of people that travel on spring break, so we didn't mess with it that year. And I said a couple of years ago, it was probably more like six years ago, but we kind of vowed then to just not mess with the calendar. This year, I thought it was a little unique with the way we were ending, and based upon some feedback I was receiving, I thought, "You know, maybe people would want us to consider something else." The only other day in play was April 18th, which happens to be Good Friday, which I realized could be somewhat controversial for some of our families, and I wanted to honor how they feel about that. It's already a workday for us. Our teachers are in doing professional development that day, and it made sense to at least see if our parent community would be interested in going a half-a-day with students on April 18th to trade out that day on June the 2nd. John and Alex created a survey for us. We emailed it out to 9,000, which is every parent we have that has given us an email address, and we got, received almost 5,000 back, which is, if you know anything or ever experienced any kind of research, that is statistically extremely significant. So, we felt really good about that. And overwhelmingly, in the 90% range, people much prefer to go to school on April the 18th. So, I'm going to present it to the Board tomorrow night. Really, the Board approves the number of days on the calendar and administratively. I probably have the authority to go ahead and make that alteration, but I want to stay respectful of maybe how the Board may feel about it. I'm going to present it to them tomorrow night and just make sure that they're in agreement. And I've obviously done some checking. I know that they ultimately will be. So, I do think that we'll be changing that last day, and we'll be ending the school year on Friday, May the 30th, as opposed to Monday, June 2nd. And that, of course, is somewhat contingent upon no more, no additional snow days. And I'm really hopeful that we're done. And I hope Wednesday's just a little bit of an anomaly, if you will, and that we get behind it. Hi, Lori. So, that's the snow day topic, and the only other thing I wanted to mention in the way of announcement is our, the road we've been traveling and down the character education path for a number of years now, something that has been very near and dear to my heart and many of my staff as well, just really trying to create a culture of caring school communities. It doesn't mean we're perfect. It doesn't mean that there aren't incidents in our schools of discipline. It doesn't mean that there aren't the occasional problems with bullying. It doesn't mean that kids don't still do things that kids do. It doesn't mean that adults don't sometimes make bad mistakes, but it means that we perpetuate a culture of caring for each other and caring for those around us. So, we have been really working hard over the past number of years, and we've had a significant number of our schools reach the status of a Missouri School of Character. Many of them have went on to achieve the status of a National School of Character. And then currently this year, our entire district achieved the status of a State District of Character. And that's not something that is just handed out to everyone. It's pretty difficult to reach that milestone. And we just got even better news the other day, that the national organization out of Washington, D.C., has decided to consider us finalists for a National District of Character. That is an honor that is bestowed, that is bestowed upon very few school districts throughout the country. And so, it doesn't mean we've made it yet, but it's somewhat of a milestone just to make it to the level of a finalist. So, character education is alive and well. So, those are just a few things that I thought maybe I'd use in an introduction, and now we'll see if people are ready for some, to throw some questions at me. And what we're going to do, I probably don't need this microphone, but we like to record these for our website and for our archives. So, I'm using this to make sure my voice is getting to the camera, and Alex has another microphone, so he will bring it around and ask you to talk into the microphone, just because we want to make sure that your questions are recorded as well. So, I hope that you're okay with that. So, anyone? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I want to compliment you on the best messenger I've ever read.
Well, thank you.
Usually, I take one look and throw them in. I just live in the neighborhood. I'm sorry. I'm not really attached to the school in any way.
Sure.
But on these new federal guidelines to cut school sweets out of the lunch program, is that going to cost, raise the price of the lunch program?
Well, a couple of things. Quite possibly, but just a lot of folks don't understand, because of the way our funding comes in for our school lunch program, the prices are dictated to us. We cannot, we cannot set our own price. The government tells us what to charge for lunches, and we cannot make a profit on our school lunch program. So, it's really all a check and balance system, and the prices have been adjusted a few times in recent years, but pretty minimally, nothing real significant. And we were just talking about this this morning at our central office meeting, and I asked that very question, and there's no indication right now that prices are going to, you know, jump significantly, but it's a good question. They could have an impact, but I just like the community to know that that's not a decision that we make. We are, we are, it's dictated to us what we need to do with our prices for school lunch program. And part of that's because we take part in, what's the program called? It's the School Lunch Program, I think is what it's called. It's the national program that we...
The federal state would give like $1.5 million per person.
Yes. It's pretty significant, and if we, we've had the questions before, "Well, what if we didn't want the federal money and we wanted to do our own thing?" Well, that creates, brings a whole different set of problems, but we could never maintain the low prices that we do currently if we went outside of that program and went alone. So, does that answer your question? And thank you for the compliments. Those go to John Wolfe and Alex Fees right behind you. I have nothing to do with making that paper, except they hound me for an article.
You have the full text.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very, very much. That is really refreshing to hear. Thank you. Next question? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dr. Knox, I would like to ask you, what have your constituency or what have your parents, the input that you've gotten regarding, I guess, two issues? The Common Core, which I know is going to be probably implemented for senior high schools next year, not this year, and it'll be important for those wanting to, you know, transfer to college or whatever.
Sure.
So, those two things, the Common Core from that respect, and then also the acceptance of the transfer students, which I know you've done such a great job with.
Thank you.
And I hear that from many, many, many of the students in need.
I appreciate you saying that. Let's start with the Common Core, and I expect there may be other questions regarding that topic as well. And it is one that I haven't had as many phone calls lately as I really expected, but that actually, I had a lot at the beginning of this school year, not many lately. The first thing I always like to tell people, and I, if you don't know me, I can't expect you to trust me. You have to develop a relationship with somebody to, for them to earn your trust. But I have been entrusted to lead the Melville School District, and I appreciate the Board's trust in affording me that opportunity. And this is one where, in the Melville School District, I really have to ask people to trust the leader of their school district. If they can't trust the leader of their school district, they probably need to be asking the Board to give them a new leader of the school district. But Common Core is going to mean different things for different school districts, whether it's in the state of Missouri, which Missouri's really adopted their own title far than what do they, you know, the Missouri Learning Standards. That's what you call them in the state of Missouri, and they are pretty much adopted straight from the Common Core. In the Melville School District, I cannot stress enough for people that the Melville School District is going to be the same quality school district with or without Common Core. Common Core does require us, the state, if they are fully implemented, which it looks like it's heading that way. There is some legislation that's trying to block that. But if it is implemented, yes, we have to align, which, what does it mean to align to Common Core? It means that we have to make sure that the learning outcomes, it's not the absolute total number of learning outcomes, but it is specific learning outcomes that have been developed that they want to make sure our students achieve by certain grade levels. Again, that's not the sum total of everything, and we just have to make sure that our curriculum and our pedagogy in the classroom delivers those learning outcomes at the times prescribed. We have high expectations in our school district. We have for a long time, and we're going to continue. And our high expectations really fit nicely with what Common Core has done, the Missouri Learning Standards. They have ramped things up. I don't mind telling folks that some of what they've done I agree with, some of what they've done I don't agree with. I had a parent send me an email not too long ago and asked me if we could just, just please opt out. And in her mind, that was the right thing to do, and clearly, that may sound to some like a noble thing, but that would start a real spiral in our school district in many ways. So, we need to make sure we're aligned until the state says we don't need to be aligned. I really can, have contended all along that the real issue people have had with Common Core, well, I shouldn't say the real issue, but predominantly, when I would talk to people, they had worries about the testing in Common Core. And we've reached a real milestone with that because predominantly, I was one that disagreed significantly with the amount of ramped-up testing. My staff knows that. They heard me bellyache about it all the time, and some of them put in great work to help fight back on those, on the number of assessments. I get worried, if you read my blog at all, you know that I get worried about more and more testing, more and more testing. Everybody's worried about Singapore and Finland and Korea and all these other countries, and I often say, you know, I want to focus on our kids, not only in the United States, I want to focus on Melville School District kids and doing what's right for those kids, for our kids. And I'm tired of competing. I'm tired of trying to focus test scores on how to be as good as a district next door or across the town or across the state or across the country or across the big pond. I want to focus on what's good for kids in the Melville School District. I think our curriculum is. I give Tina Plummer, my Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, is second to none. Trying to embarrass you, Tina, but she is doing just a fabulous job, very, very knowledgeable, and not to mention the rest of my staff is knowledgeable in curriculum too. So, the success I wanted to talk about with the testing is that myself, along with a large group of superintendents, have talked significantly to the state and have made many pleas for them to revisit the ramped-up testing that was going to occur, and as a result, they changed it drastically. It was supposed to ramp up, remember those percentages, Tina? It was supposed to ramp up something in the 50%. It's 50% more high-stakes standardized testing. And the result is, we are now going to have less testing next year than what we've had in the past. Testing serves a purpose. It should inform instruction, and we worry about and implement all kinds of assessments throughout the year in our classrooms to inform instruction, but I'm not interested in testing to compete with Singapore. I'm just not. And that's where I get frustrated with things like, you know, what the feds and the government pushes down to us. So, I don't see it as we have an option to just say, "No, we're not going to do Common Core." But what I like to say to people is, "I can promise you, as long as I am the leader of this school district, I will not do anything that I deem as bad for children. I would never do that, and I would draw a line in the sand if I felt that something was coming down from the authorities that I felt was just bad for children. We're not doing bad things for children in this school district. We're doing very good things for children. We're doing them quite well." So, that's, and I want to get to your other topic too. Gene, you have a question about the Common Core?
No, no. It's about Common Core.
Well, let's stay on that then.
Well, actually, I wanted to address Ms. Plummer. And what do you see as the primary differences between the Show Me Standards and the new Missouri Learning Standard?
Use the microphone there.
Show Me Standards are actually not going away at this point. They're not. No. Missouri Learning Standards will just be in addition to the Show Me Standards. Yeah. The Missouri Learning Standards eventually are supposed to be placing, replacing the grade level expectations, the GLEs, that are currently in Missouri, but that hasn't happened at this point because there aren't standards yet developed in all academic areas. Science and social studies have not yet developed standards. It's the English Language Arts and the Mathematics at this point. So, to answer your question, I think that the positives of the standards are that there are things that are raising the standards, and they are preparing our children to be more college and career-ready at all levels, and focusing on more nonfiction, for example, in reading, which aligns to science and social studies. So, those are things we're really excited about. But as Dr. Canos said, we, as the district, still do oversee our curriculum. We just have to make sure we're meeting those standards. So, that's the minimum, and that's what we're excited about. It gives us the opportunity, as we're always doing, curriculum isn't ever, it never ends. You're always realigning, looking at your curriculum. So, it just is giving us that opportunity to make sure we are going through and then making sure we are aligning to those standards.
So, am I to understand that, so is it safe to assume that your opinion, in your position, you, Ms. Plummer?
She's looking at me.
Is that this is, is that this is really good for our school district ultimately?
What I can tell you is that, being the curriculum person, I can tell you that we have to align to the standards. I think that there are very good things with the standards. I can tell you that there are things that maybe I don't necessarily agree with, with the whole process, but I do think there are very good things with the standards, and I do think, once again, that it is raising the expectations for our students, and I think that is a good thing.
Thank you so much.
And I'll add, I'll add just an additional comment to that, Gene. I'll maybe even be a little more candid. I appreciate that Tina's trying to be very appropriate in her answer.
She did a good answer.
Yeah, it is, it is. She did a good job. Yeah. Can I say what I want to say? You know, I, for those of us that were around when the Show Me Standards were introduced, if you were involved in school districts at all, you knew it was a lot of the same controversy. And it was, it was across, locally anyway, it was across political aisles. But the biggest complaint about the Show Me Standards was they were not stringent enough. They weren't strict enough. They weren't high enough, and that's what we heard. And of course, they evolved, and we had grade level expectations and class level expectations. And now, you know, the best example I've used is that when Tina did a, which a lot of this information is on our website, where you can look at side-by-side comparisons to what was expected in specific grade level, specific content areas, what will be expected. And there are some things that kindergartners with the new Common Core will be expected to do that used to be expected of our fourth graders, you know? So, that's where, you know, can we do that? And is it just fine? Works nicely with our full-day kindergarten program that we implement. A lot of people think full-day just means, you're just with the kids full-day, you don't do anything any different. It's a different curriculum with a full-day kindergarten program. So, it works nicely with that add-on. But again, are we, even as educators, going to agree with every, every standard in the Common Core with, as Tina said, the way it was developed? Not necessarily. I mean, we have the right to be human and disagree too, and I'm pretty outspoken when I disagree even with the state. The State Department knows that. I've been up there many times and meet with them often. But I just cannot say enough to people that in the Melville School District, whether you're for or against, the quality of our school district is not going to be affected. I will not let that happen, and that's what I want people to know. So, let's jump to the unaccredited transfers. I think your question was just an update? Is that what you'd asked for? Was just an update on the...
Well, yeah. What sort of feedback did you get?
Oh, feedback.
From the parents and the teachers? Like I said, I have heard from many, many of these people that have transferred students into you, that you've done a great job with them, and they hope it continues on.
I heard your question the first time. I just wanted to hear you say that again. It was stroking my ego a little bit. You know, I really don't get many comments in the last, gosh, I don't know if internally, meaning in our community, that I've had one question in the last two months. I'm still heavily involved because along with a select group of superintendents around the state, we're trying to resolve the issue, and there's a lot of frustration, and I could turn this into a speaking engagement and I could deliver an address to you that I could, as my staff knows, I could go on for a couple of hours, just about how they're missing the mark. The law misses the mark in saying that transfers occur, that that's some kind of a good solution, and they miss the mark on trying to fix the situation by supporting that law. You know, people really are misinformed about public education in the United States. And there's this, there's this conflict in the conversation lately that is, that is really quite dynamic and quite fascinating. But for instance, and listen, this is not universal when I say these things. There are people that fit different molds that don't fit specifically on one side or the other. So, please know that I understand that. But, you know, a lot of people that are, that are, for instance, anti-higher standards, anti-Common Core, a lot of the same people are folks that do want to compare us to Singapore. Well, how come you're not as good as Singapore or Finland or Korea? And what so many people don't understand, and I think there are very intelligent people that do not understand, that the poverty level in the United States is much greater than almost all other industrialized nations. People think of other Third World countries, and they think differently. Well, those aren't the countries people are comparing us to. They're comparing us to other industrialized nations. Our poverty rate of something like 24% is higher than all of them. And we try to educate our kids in poverty, and that's what we don't do a good job of in the United States. in the United States. We don't do a good job of educating our children in poverty, in poverty-stricken communities. And for that very reason, our numbers do not look good in comparison. But when you adjust for poverty, when you compare, like if you look at the school districts in our country that are less than 10 percent poverty, and you compare them with light countries that have less than 10 percent poverty, guess who's on top? The United States. Not kind of, commandingly on top. The same thing, if you look at countries that are kind of in that second percentile of maybe 10 percent to 29 percent. Again, you compare countries that have that level of poverty, we are commandingly on top. And it continues. So, when you account for poverty, and please hear me, it's not an excuse. My critics quickly, and those are mostly special interest groups that don't like the things I have to say because they don't help special interest groups, but they want to say, well, you just use poverty as an excuse. I'm not. We should be accountable. We need to do a better job educating our children in poverty. But it's a deeper problem than the schools. But if you show me, and I challenge anybody, if you show me a flourishing community, nine out of 10 times, maybe nine out of 100 times, I'll show you a flourishing school inside that flourishing community. It's almost going to happen in every situation. If you show me a downtrodden, broken community, almost every time, the school is going to be a downtrodden, broken school. So, we can get into these arguments all day long of the chicken and the egg, what came first? Who failed who? Did the school fail the community, or the community failed the school? And then people want to come out, and they want to say, they want to blame the parents in those communities, which you have a right to do that, and you may strongly believe that. However, it's not going to magically change overnight. Even if you blame them all day long, we're still going to have an issue with those disparities in those schools. So, we have to find ways to give kids in impoverished schools the same expectations that we have for kids in more affluent communities. And what we have to accept, that it may not be a straight line. And it may not, it may very well take a lot longer to get to those high expectations. So, in the more affluent district, maybe we just pretty much shoot straight up to that high expectation. In a poverty-stricken community, it's, the path is going to meander, and we're going to hit hurdles along the way, and there has to be more supports in place. The other thing that is alarming, there is no way anybody can disprove that the problems with our schools in this country are in poverty-stricken communities. It's evident, it's obvious, you just can't, you can't argue that. And yet, we put fewer resources into our poverty-stricken schools in this country than we do any other school. And why is that? Because our schools are funded by the health of the community. Healthy communities tend to fund their schools. Unhealthy communities don't. And again, you can argue about why that is and what it should be. So, we need to be talking about how to better prepare kids. If you talk about a family, and you think of what goes on with a family in poverty, you know, two families that are doubled up in a home, probably no fathers, and I'm not stereotyping, I'm just telling you what is typical in an impoverished community. Maybe two mothers, and maybe they're taking the bedrooms, maybe they each have three, four, five kids. Those kids are sleeping on couches, on the floors, wherever. It's usually probably a two-bedroom home. And if they have a TV in, it's probably on all the time. There's not a lot in the way of reading material that is in a house like that. And yet, we expect kids go home to that house and do the same homework and not be distracted as we expect our kids in more affluent to go home and they report to a quiet room, or they have a parent that sits down and helps them. So, again, you can blame whoever you want for a situation like that, but we cannot step aside from the facts that it has a significant impact on schools. So, I am way beyond the question you asked, but I can tell you that I've received mostly good feedback from the community. It's really not been an issue lately at all. I'll just give you some quick numbers, and Jeff's my inside expert, Dr. Bressler, on this. He kind of takes care of this and mans this for me. But we have, we accepted 226 students from Riverview Gardens. Now, that's on top of 467 that we already have from St. Louis City. 226, I'm sorry, 216. 216. And that has slowly decreased, especially throughout this rough winter, because kids have to walk a long way to bus stops, they have to be at bus stops at like 5:15 in the morning, and they have to drive a long way on the bus. And now, we're down to 196? 193. So, it's dropping even a little further. We have asked for letters of intent from those families who intend to return next year, and it's one, what Jeff, one?
One of 153.
So, 153 have given us letters of intent to return. And then the number of new, the deadline to apply through Riverview Gardens ended a couple of weeks back. And that is significantly low. Number 25 new transfers. So, what that tells us is that the mass exodus has already occurred. There's not going to be an additional mass exodus, not from Riverview and not from Normandy. We don't even know if Normandy's going to be around next year. We know that they're going to be held financially together for the rest of the year, but we don't know what's going to happen next year. So, the problem looking forward is when other schools go unaccredited. If St. Louis City is to go back unaccredited within a couple of years, that would be another mass exodus. And moving students does not fix the problem. In fact, it depletes any hope from fixing the problem in that community. And that's my belief. I want to be clear on that. Not everybody agrees with me on that. But, you know, it started with Welston. Welston went unaccredited. They did not do a good job of turning it around. The state got involved, the state couldn't turn it around. So, they attached Welston to Normandy. And Normandy absorbed all of those scores, and here they are. And people, again, even our legislators, it just amazes me that they don't consider these things. The financial analyses that we have done as superintendents prove that it's just not financially sustainable. It will bankrupt schools, it will spiral, it will create consolidated school districts, which most people don't want. Go out to rural Missouri and say the word consolidated. Talk to little small towns like Vienna and Iberia, and talk about consolidating school district rivals in sports. You better run after you say that word. But that's what it will lead to, because schools will go bankrupt, and those kids have to be attached somewhere else. So, it's a mess. There is legislation, both on the Senate side and on the House side right now, has some good things in it, has some things that I think are terrible for education. But I hope that if they come to fruition, maybe some of that stuff will get cleaned up. And whatever happens, we obviously will make sure that we keep the Melville School District as strong as we possibly can.
You said a while ago about not putting enough resources into intercity schools. I bet resources doesn't necessarily mean money. Because people, I bet, a lot of brains here looked and said, wait a minute, we're spending 18,000 a student in the city of St. Louis or something, and money doesn't necessarily equal a good use of resources?
That's true, but you also have to realize there's some misinformation about St. Louis City too, because some of the highest performing school districts in the state are in the St. Louis City public schools. I don't know how many people know that, but they have a significant number of highest performing schools in the state of Missouri. Some of them are the magnet schools, but they're still in the St. Louis City program. And, so anyway, that wasn't your question. You know, it's hard to talk about resources and remove it totally from money, because what, the real disadvantage impoverished students have is how well they are prepared for kindergarten. And the fact that a district like ours can do full-day kindergarten curriculum, and an impoverished district would probably do, most of them are going to do half-day programs still. And it's just a foundation. Early interventions are key, and without those early interventions, kids are already behind when they enter into grade one. If you don't have early childhood programs like we do in the Melville School District, then kids are at a disadvantage. They did a study, and this speaks volumes to me, I'm sure many of you have heard this, but they did a study on the vocabulary that children in impoverished communities are exposed to compared to kids in more affluent communities. The difference in the number of words that kids hear in impoverished communities versus more affluent communities by the time they reach kindergarten, so when they walk into kindergarten, is 30 million. So, 30 million words, vocabulary, that more affluent kids are exposed to in their upbringing from birth until school age, is that significant? And that is significant. And you even think of things, you put me back on this topic, so I'll wrap this up, and we'll get off this topic, but, you know, all the difference, I'm almost done with a book that I've been reading about impoverished communities, and it's really, it's really, really fascinating. Even the difference is, of most of our children, what did we do with them in the summertime? We took them on vacation, right? And while that's hardly school, I know anytime I went on vacation, we didn't do big vacations when I was a kid, but you're seeing things, you're doing things, you're learning things. You're going maybe to historic places, you're seeing some magnificent wonder in the world. Kids in poverty aren't getting that. So, the learning doesn't continue when they're on summer vacation. So, if you, I saw something recently that was really interesting, but it kind of showed a graph, and it showed, you know, children trying to kind of on a level playing field, and then it would talk about the impoverished student, and it would show just by default how kids end up in kindergarten so much more advanced if they're in more affluent families. And then from there on, the gap just continues to grow because of things like what I just said. Summer programs, what happens, after-school tutoring, it does cost money. So, it usually equates to staff, it usually equates to programming, it equates to things like even programs in communities like nurses to newborns, you know? Poverty-stricken communities have a lot of teenage mothers, and they don't always have the best skill for raising those children. But it's not the children's fault, you know? They're in their situation, and we need to remember that. Okay. Let's move on. Sonny.
I don't know if this is a strange question, but it's one on my mind. You may not have an answer for it, so if you don't have, if you haven't thought about it, maybe just an opinion, and it may just go flowing right on with the transfer students. But again, I'm not for a city-county merger, but looking ahead, if there was a city-county merger, what are some of the things that could impact Melville School District?
Well, that's a great question. It's a really great question, and it has been on my mind. I have to admit that I don't have a whole lot of knowledge about that. This gentleman sitting right here, Mike Anthony, is extremely knowledgeable about what is trying to be done, and what it takes, and the impact it could mean, depending how, there's many different strategies of even, like the Oakville community that's trying to create their own county. That, whether we're talking about that or the merger. So, there's all kinds of different things that I don't even claim to understand. But I don't think, at least initially, that it would mean anything to the structure of the Melville School District. At least, I've never heard anybody suggesting that they wanted to break apart our school district or create two smaller school districts or something of the sort. What I would worry most about is if the, you know, if it would do anything to our tax base or our funding mechanism in how, because we are heavily supported locally. We are barely on the education foundation formula in the state, so we get around 80 percent of our money from local taxes. So, again, I'm not an expert enough, Sonny, to talk about the merger and what that does potentially to those kinds of structures, but initially thinking about it, that's about the only thing that concerns me. Other things, when you do talk about new counties being formed, you can't help thinking that, you know, are you talking about a new police department? Are you talking about, you know, a new tax base? And if that's the case, if that's just our Oakville community, how does that affect, you know, the funding with, you know, with our school across the board, so to speak? So, not a real good answer for you, but I can ensure you that it's on my mind. And as that develops, obviously, I'm going to have to become more and more knowledgeable about it. Yes, sir?
Sherry and I, my wife, we have three children, two of which have graduated from the Melville School District, and we've been generally happy. We're still here. Obviously, we have a child, and he's a sophomore at Oakville High School. So, just to tell you where I'm coming from. But one of the things that our kids have shared with us with regard to the methods, if you will, that are used for teaching math in the district, and this is going to pull all of these subjects down to a much closer level. So, I hope this is appropriate venue or arena for this. But it seems that the one thing that's kind of struck us odd with regard to math is that they, well, two things that our children have communicated to us. One is, is that there's not, they think that there should be more instruction actually in class as to how to go about solving the problems. And then the other issue is that they typically, if you will, have only graded their work, their homework, if you will, on a completion basis, if you will. They weren't checking to see if their homework was correct, which kind of, I guess, has puzzled us as to how effective that would be. Now, we're not educators, Sherry's a substitute teacher.
It's a great question.
She's an educator to that extent.
They're great questions.
But, so that's something that's kind of puzzled. And I do have another issue and/or question, but if you want to answer that one first, if I can hang on to it.
Yeah, let me try to be brief. I struggle with that. They're fabulous questions. We just talked about this stuff today, didn't we? We were just talking about this in our cabinet today. And it does go back to relating to the Common Core. It does go back to, you know, as you said, it kind of brings from a 30,000-foot view down to something a little more up close and personal. It has a lot to do with trying to change how we educate children to have more success with children, and try to accommodate what colleges and universities say kids need, the skills they need to have when they come to college. And that one in particular is about children's ability to think critically and to solve problems on their own, and what the universities have told us, and what Singapore and Finland and all those other places will say if you look at the differences, that there's a lot of task management in what we teach. Go home and do this, do these number of problems in math, do the repetition, and we call that, I call that passive learning. It's not necessarily active learning. All of us can think of examples, I can think of a million of them, in my formative years of where I was forced to memorize things or do things by rote, and I would bet as much as 70 percent of that is out of my head now, and I did not retain it. So, it kind of goes back to if, you know, I think it's biblical, so forgive me, but you know the old saying about teaching a man to fish, you know, and you can feed him for a lifetime, you know? So, I think the concept with critical thinking is that if we teach kids how to think, they're going to be much more successful in the long run. Now, the question that came up in our CO meeting today is that, you know what though? My child, someone with my cabinet member said, my child does better with the repetition. And that's where I think as we do this adjustment, we need to keep in mind that we do differentiate instruction. There are some times where for some children, it's going to be appropriate to go home and do repetition, have that instruction in class, not the flipped classroom concept, have the instruction in class where they know what to do, they go home, they do 25- instruction in class where they know what to do, they go home, they do 25 problems, check it off and come back, and they're better at it. That may work for some students. And we've got, as we do this transition, we've got to figure that out and make sure that we're differentiating. But really, it's an answer to what a lot of critics have said about public education, especially the university level, that kids are not taught to think problems. They handle things on a surface level, you know, A plus B equals C, not why does A plus B equals C? And that's the attempt there. Anytime, you know, children are human, teachers are human, anytime you're going through a transition, it's going to be difficult. We do that when we adopt new, if we adopt a new math program. In fact, I've been in the district long enough to see that happen a couple times, and every time, even before we were talking about these strategies, it's difficult for families to absorb and children to even absorb and make the adjustments. So we're in an adjustment period, but the bottom line is, we're obligated to make sure that your child is getting what your child needs out of that math class. And I'm very pleased, by the way, with the math department at Oakville High School, so I really do think they're a solid group of experts, and I really encourage you to keep your lines of communication with the teacher. When you have that concern and you observe your child struggling with a concept, make sure that you talk to the, you don't have to wait for conferences. Give them a call and expect them to call you back or make an appointment and go and help them, help them even give you skills to better sit with your child and help them work through that process. The other thing about completion, I'm not entirely sure I heard exactly what you were saying about the task completion and not knowing if that even matters.
Well, I guess the struggle that one of our kids had was that, you know, he would work through the problems, and I guess honestly, he didn't know if he fully understood it or not, and he would complete the problems, and, you know, the teacher apparently would not look at it to the extent of determining if it was accurate or not. So he was kind of going on his merry way, he would get to the test, he would not do well, and then it was on to the next subject, you know? So, and he became discouraged as a result of that, and kind of a spiral.
So I'm still going to encourage you, and then I'm going to back up and give you some thoughts on that, but please make sure, and maybe you already have, but the teacher needs to understand that you, as parents, are seeing that and have that concern. And you need, you deserve some time with that and some explanation for that, and it should be that, some confidence on the teacher's part, that that's okay. Exploratory, it all irons out in the process in the long run, and they get from point A to point B. It's just through a path of discovery instead of, "We're going to beat it into your head by making you do this over and over again." You know, the thing about grading and homework is at a real interesting place also, and I'll be quite honest with you, I personally am trying to create a little bit of a paradigm shift in our school district because I contend that our grades are not always reflective of a child's comprehension. Our grades are often reflective of task management. I think that some of our higher-level courses, some of the AP courses, I couldn't pass if I tried. You know, the things that those kids learn, I go in those classes, I am just blown away at the level of, the depth of knowledge, it's just, it's just absolutely amazing. Nothing any of us had when we were in school, and not unless you're quite young. But I wonder sometimes, when a child gets a grade of an A, you say a A minus, at the end of the year, how much of that grade represents comprehension? And how much of it represents what they did to get a grade? So you have to go home, you have to complete this homework, come back, we're going to check it off, and then we're going to put in the grade book that you did it, you know? And we're trying to, I'm trying to forge a little bit, and it's not only me, I'm not the creator of this paradigm, but we're trying to get beyond that a little bit. Some school districts have stopped recording grades for homework altogether. It's no longer, students still do homework, but it's no longer part of their grades because it's either practice or it's exploratory. And that's hard for us to swallow, that grew up in a more traditional manner, and we know what we did and we know how we did it, and so it's out of our comfort zone. But I really do believe that we are moving into a direction of worrying more about comprehension. Now, that doesn't necessarily answer your question because your concern is that your child is going through that method but getting to the test and not feeling prepared. So that's why I'm encouraging, that's a conversation with the teacher because they need to understand that. And you need to know, is there something that your child should be doing different in class or should be doing different at home? Is there some part of it that your child isn't understanding to help with that? But the concept of not using that homework to determine if they're getting it or not, that should not be the only ability for a teacher to decide if a child understands. In the flipped classroom concept, which is what you're kind of describing, what they do, they come and they work in class while the teacher is watching and seeing what they do as they kind of explore through those things, those observable moments, teachers should have enough opportunity to observe their students to know if they're on the right path, they're not on the right path, they're absorbing it, they're not absorbing it. So there's many more ways to do that than just go home, do this homework, come back, let's check it off. And again, that's what we all did. But it's just, we're trying to develop something that caters to what universities say that our children need when they walk in their doors. And we hear it all, all the time from universities, that kids hit college now and they need remedial courses. And so it's a paradigm shift and a change, and we're out of our comfort zone a little bit, all of us, parents, kids, the educators, but we think it's in the right direction. But there needs to be a lot of patience for the children, and by all means, if you feel that a child is, you know, not just uncomfortable sometimes, by the way, I have teenage children, so I see this too, and I'm an educator, you know? So, but you have to keep the conversation alive with the teachers, and just ask the bold questions, you know? You're a very kind and polite person, so teachers aren't going to take that the wrong way. They're not going to feel challenged by that. Just, you need to understand as a parent, and if you see your child struggling, they need to help you with that.
Okay, thank you. And just one other quick issue, and that is, we've seen, you know, a focus, if you will, on character throughout the district, you know, you see the word of the month here or there and things like that. I think from our perspective, one of the things that we believe could be improved on would be the enforcement of whatever dress code has been established. I don't know what that dress code is, but I would, from the reports that we get from even our kids, and Sherry's in the schools all the time as a substitute, it just seems like the perceived dress code, at least from our perspective, must not be being enforced. And we've heard from our kids that when it does appear to be being enforced, it's selective, and honestly, from their view, it's been, you know, and I understand this is subjective view, I suppose, too, but it just seems to them that it's the kids that are less socially accepted or popular, you know, that seem to get targeted for the dress code versus others. And just for disclosure purposes, our kids haven't been selected or, you know?
No, I'm with you, yeah.
But I just thought, you know, just as a suggestion, it's just from our perspective.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that. I will tell you that, again, it sounds like me asking for your trust, and I understand that you substitute, but I'm, along with my staff, we're very visible in our buildings. I'm in a school building every Tuesday and every Thursday, and I don't leave the building until I've been in every single classroom. So we've got 11,000 students, and I see them. And I can just tell you from my observation, I don't share that it's a hefty problem, and maybe my standards are different, and I apologize if that's the case. I have two teenage daughters, so maybe that'll speak to you a little bit. I think my standards are in line. Do I occasionally see some questionable things? I do. I also see examples of our principals dealing with those questionable things. It can be more complex than just on the surface, you know? The complexity of, you know, do you, again, we get back into these tug-of-woars, you know, you may not be able to resolve the problem with that child and whatever that dress code may be. Now, if it's extreme, it's extreme, so that's, but if something, you know what, that's probably not the best choice. We may not be able to correct that with a parent, there may not be a parent at home, there may be a parent telling us that they're not going to come up to school. We may not, you get into some legal issues, what can we make a child wear and not make them wear? So it can be, it can be complex. And then if we choose to remove a child from a situation, which again, if it's extreme enough, we would do that, but if it's just, you know, probably wasn't the best judgment, you know, the straps on that shirt need to be wider or something of the sort, we've got to enter into the balance of how much harm is this versus the fact of the child not learning in class for that day and removing. So we get into those challenging situations, but I agree that we need to have standards. We do have a dress code, it's not, it's not uniform. I mean, it's not a uniform. It should be applied in a uniform manner. I do think when you have a big district, we're the 20th largest district in the state, and I've got 10 elementary schools, four middle schools, two high schools, two alternative buildings, and those are all under the leadership of different people, and I think they understand our standards, but there's going to be slight nuances between various buildings. But, and the other thing, too, is inside of a building, you've got the principal who may or may not encounter any given student over the course of the day, and then you've got all these different teachers. So the best thing, we say this to staff, because some staff have, you know, I shouldn't say higher, more stringent standards than others do about student dress and, you know, when all else fails. Point it out to the principal. Make sure the principal knows that, you know, your concern about what a specific child looks like or what they're wearing for that day. But I wouldn't argue with you. I mean, I think that's something we need to constantly be aware of. Again, I'm not observing large issues of that when I'm in our buildings, and I think my standards are pretty high. I know how my daughters to look when they leave to go to school every day. So, and by all means, if you want to talk more about it a little later, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I have a follow-up question to the math question. In regard to test-taking, why is there not a standard for the information a child is allowed to have on a test? For instance, in Oakville High School, some students are allowed at a test to have a note card, and other classes are allowed to have a full sheet of paper. Why is there not a standard or consistent from class to class in the same, like, subject, a standard that all the teachers can give out?
Well, I don't know if you'll like my answer for this one, but having been a teacher for a number of years, I expected professional autonomy in my class. Now, if I'm not doing the job, if I'm not getting it done, then that should be in question and should be addressed. But as far as what a teacher decides is appropriate for a kid based upon, you know, again, we don't dictate, that's something that's confusing about Common Core, for instance. People think that is a curriculum, that it dictates exactly what is taught in the class. It's learning outcomes. A teacher, a professional in a classroom, their job is to make sure kids reach those outcomes, along with our expected outcomes. How they go about that can be different from classroom to classroom, and it may be, it may be because if you're talking about two of the exact same courses taught by two different teachers, it's just stylistically, it's something different. But all I can tell you is that the requirements and where we expect those teachers to get those students is no different. It's just their style of approaching that, and we choose to not be, you know, people talk about local control. Well, we believe in local control. We also believe in not dictating, you know, all the pedagogy, all of the, you know, stylistically, how teachers teach in any situation, and we think that's important. And that's why some children do really well with this teacher, not so well with this teacher, and you can flip-flop and it can be the opposite. So it's a little bit of, you know, sometimes it's stylistically matching things up. Again, I don't know if you liked that answer or if that really even answers your question, is there...
No one answers it. I'm just concerned because, you know, it's something I'd rather talk to you after and private about, and, because it's really specific and, you know, it's something that should be dealt with.
Is this something you've shared with the principal, the building principal?
I've had conferences with the teacher and the math coordinator for the school, and, you know, it's not resolved to my satisfaction.
Okay, okay. You can definitely talk to me, and I'll offer up my curriculum assistant superintendent there as well, but ultimately, it's really going to be good, too, if you have a conversation with the principal, because they're the ones observing those teachers and knowing specifically what's going on in their classrooms, and they should be able to address that in a more clear manner. You know, I don't even know the teachers you're talking about, I don't know, so, but I do know that you can, anywhere in our district, and again, this is the part I said I didn't know if you'd like, but I don't want a school district. Here's the neat thing in our district, I talk about going around to our buildings, and this wasn't its way many years ago. I can be in, say, Oakville Middle School, and I can be in the English Language Arts Department, and I can go from this class in this hall to over there to that class across the hall, back over and ping-pong down the hall in these ELA classes, and every one will be teaching the exact same content. So they're all aligned. That wasn't always the case. So there's curriculum mapping that takes place, so they're in the right place, but every single one will be teaching it a different way. Different style, different homework, different requirements, different projects, different active learning, different passive learning, but the end result needs to be the same. So if you want to ask me a little more later on, that'd be fine. Peggy?
I would add to that, just to say, my oldest child is a freshman in college, and he called me first semester in tears practically because his English teacher is making him write seven papers compared to his buddy's one paper, you know, so comparative...
In college, you mean?
Yeah, in college. So comparative. Well, they need to learn that every teacher's not the same, and every teacher is going to have different expectations. So where better to learn it? In high school or in college, you know? And so I think personally, no offense, that it's a good thing that teachers use different style to teach because they're not going to get the exact same style of teaching at a university.
Right. And the only thing that I'll add to that, again, at the end of the day, though, we still need to make sure that the same outcomes are occurring. Even if a class is taught night and day different, our expectations are that the learning outcomes are still achieved and still make it there. We've still got time. Yes, sir? Another regular attendee?
I got a comment first. I went to the Oakville High School senior night basketball game, and I was impressed with the GPAs, with the team managers, and some of the graduating seniors.
Thank you.
Very impressive. Nick Traxler, I guess, does a good job with them, but that was impressive. My question is about technology. Is there any Windows computers with XP operating systems in the Melville School District?
With XP? No, we're all on Windows 7.
Good.
We're all on Windows 7. Yeah, we got off XP as quick as we could, that was a mess. And I know there's some lingering problems with it, too, but we're all Windows 7, yeah. And we are experimenting, part of our technology, we're trying to build up to a one-to-one initiative. We've done it the right way, we've got a lot of schools that are checking out what we're doing. We're a ways off, but we've been funding more and more technology every year, and we're close to our high schools being fully one-to-one. There are laptops there, which are, again, Windows format. We are experimenting with some iPads in the elementary schools, and that could be what we eventually roll out, which would be more of, obviously, the Mac format. But...
I have a question about that.
Yeah?
The schools teach Mac format, yet when people get into the business world, it's all Windows.
Actually, it's the other way around, believe it or not. We get criticized... We were not, we get criticized quite a bit because a lot of, it depends now also, it depends the field that you're talking about. For instance, the publishing field is all Mac.
Right.
Now, I'm happy to tell you, though, we actually do have Macs in those classes to adjust to that. But I don't hear that too much, but I trust that you...
I hear that from people that are through school, they're Mac, and when they get to the business world, it's Windows. So it's, it's universal, seems to be.
I see.
I just wondered what the...
Well, we, again, our operating systems are predominantly Windows, and really, we're only considering the possibility, our pilots with the iPads. And we've also used some other tablet formats that are more the Android or tend to be more of a Windows format. But those are, you know, more the younger primary grades that would probably evolve to a Windows operating system before, if we stay with the program we have, before they would graduate.
I have two graduates, 12 and 13, and then I have a freshman. And I just wanted to make a comment that we've been happy with all our teachers except for one in the nine years that, right now, that I have under my belt. And we made the, we were coming out of the parochial system...
Sure.
And made the choice to go to Oakville. And after the first open house, my wife was totally on board and was very happy with that whole format. My comment was about graduation. We had a 12, 13 graduate and a 12 graduate, and really enjoyed having it at the football field.
Yeah, I did, too. I did, too.
You know, if we could work around the weather concerns...
Yeah.
It just was such a pain to drive all the way up to St. Charles.
Sure, I agree.
And so much more personal, having it right there.
More personal. I also like the fact that, you know, when you're done with graduation, if you're in your district, our local businesses benefit, because people go to the restaurants in our local businesses. It's all around a more ideal setting. And we moved away from that a number of years back, largely due to the things that you mentioned, the size and the weather. If we can be guaranteed to have a program on our football field, it's probably going to be acceptable like it was last year, although we still have to limit because of parking. So we can't just say, and that's hard for us to limit, but it turned out okay last year. The problem is, even if we tell people, okay, you're limited to five, and we have to try to keep it, if you can, one car per family, and we get away with that. And then we get to Friday before graduation, and they're predicting nasty weather. I can't wait until Sunday to decide to move that inside. So I've got to shift my planning, at least by Saturday, 24 hours' time, like I had last year, to shift it inside. When I do that, suddenly families go down, so we can meet fire code and fit into our gymnasiums, they can have two people per family.
My high school class was 450-something.
Sure.
And we were in an auditorium at a university, and it was basically, that was a requirement, it was two or three.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, I don't, you may not have been part of the sample, or if you're not aware of this, but we also did a survey, because after we did it last year and we pulled it off, now, of course, we had, it was beautiful weather. You may recall, we had, we had, there had rain, and I said, "We're not moving. We're going to stand here and get rained on if we have to, but we're not moving." But it was nice and cool. I hear horror stories of, especially on that Oakville track, when, you know, the sun was beating down, the kids, we got kids pass out because of the heat, and even adults and even faculty members. So, you know, there's good and bad with it. We definitely got, we got lucky last year. But we did put a survey out, because I said if our, we'll do a simple majority, but if our parents overwhelmingly want us to go back to that, we helped them understand that we would probably limit to five on the football field. If we had to go inside, and it were last minute, no exceptions, we'd have to go down to two. And it was a pretty commanding, the survey returned a pretty commanding number of people that preferred to still have the open opportunities out in St. Charles. So, you know...
Most schools were within like a half percent.
Yeah.
Each down to...
Yeah, there wasn't a drastic difference between Melville or Oakville. So it's one of those where I, you know, I'm...
I think it was opportunity where I was at one one year and the other the next year.
Yeah, I'm, well, I don't know. I've never really asked my staff, but I, for one, we like not having to drive out there. I mean, we liked, you know, we liked the, of course, if we did do them at home, we would not always do them on the same field. We had to do that because the Melville Field had no plumbing, so we couldn't open our restrooms over there. So that's why we had to have Melville over on Oakville last year. But I agree with everything you said, but there's just some times where I think you have to really listen to the people that are most affected by it. And again, while plenty of people said, "Yeah, keep it here, we'll accept the conditions," more people said, "We still want where we can bring as many cars as we want, we can bring as many family members as we want, and we don't have to worry about that." And then, so we're staying with that. Yes, ma'am?
Can't you use your auditorium?
No, we did not build, we would have to have an auditorium that would seat probably a minimum of about 2,000. Yeah. So even the Rickman Auditorium in Fox School District, which was built as a large venue for smaller traveling acts, that really can't house our graduations, at least not just wide-open like they can at the family arena. Our, you know, people ask that, they say, "Well, what in the world did you build an auditorium that can't house your graduation?" Well, here's a why. Because an auditorium of that size would have had to have been built on additional property somewhere, which means we would have had to buy property. It would have probably cost maybe three times as much, which would have taken a ballot issue and higher taxes. Instead, we figured out how to do that within the means that we have. So it really was a curricular space, and trust me, we're using that place significantly all day long, and it's rare that evening doesn't have something going on in there that's all curricular in nature, which is why I have plans to put one at Oakville High School, too. So, because they're curricular spaces, and to have a comprehensive high school of our size and to not have those curricular spaces for our performing arts, it's just, it's a real disservice to those children.
Yeah, again, I like to ask the easy questions.
I like easy questions.
I heard that Melville was on discussion of merit pay. And I guess I'm all for that, for the teachers. If we find a great teacher, well, that's double his or her salary, that's good. Or maybe the same thing should be true of the administrators and administration. But anyway, what criteria? That's my question. If it helps the kids, I'm all for it, but what criteria is going to be used to pick out these great teachers for doubling their salary or something?
Sure, sure. Doubling. It just makes me nervous when I hear it. Jokes me up, too. No. I really did get choked up. It's a great question, and I can honestly tell you that we haven't ironed out those details yet. That obviously would be details that we would have to iron out, and that's on my shoulders. As the superintendent of the school district, I'm accountable for evaluating. Of course, I don't do that personally, my staff does that, but I'm still, it sits on my shoulders to make sure that our staff is evaluated and held accountable and developed professionally, and when they're not effective, that we get them out of the system. And so if we go forward fully with a merit pay program, that'll be on my shoulders to make sure that that is implemented in a way that effectively measures those teachers and determines, you know? The thing that I will tell you is that we don't, do we have some teachers that are better than others? Of course we do. I mean, every system is. But we don't fiddle around in the Melville School District with teachers that aren't doing their job. Our board members know that. It's, we move people out of the system pretty quick when we've got issues with them. So I expect that somewhat that criteria will be pretty manageable, because I think a high number of our teachers, a significantly high number of our teachers, will be eligible for those higher bumps. So we've got to figure out the financial component to that as well, because we've got to be able to sustain how we pay them. But that'll be, I'll be accountable for that.
Dr. Knoske, as I've been out and about in the area quite a bit recently, talking to the people of the Melville School District, I'm afraid some of them misinterpreted Mr. Stoner's comments this week concerning the merit pay. To several people that I, or more than several that I've spoken to, it almost sounded like it was a done deal. And I think that that was kind of unfortunate, that it, you know, sounded that way, or that they interpreted that way.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to Mark's defense, I don't think it was his intent to interpret it that way or say it that way. And for those of us who have been involved in it, we wouldn't sit there and interpret it that way. But I can fully understand if somebody were sitting in the audience, hearing it for the first time, that maybe that's what they would interpret. But just to clear it up, there was a committee that, of teachers, administrators, and board members that agreed to study it for two years. They did study it. The intent of it was to come up with a plan that if the district so chooses, could be implemented. Well, they came up with a plan. And that's what the unified vote was about, was that that was the appropriate plan to consider going forward. It's going to be an item that we expect will be negotiated with our teachers. And then ultimately, we've got to do the financial analysis of exactly how that would be supported. And, you know, we've talked about maybe running kind of a, yeah, pilot, which we've got to be careful with pilots, because you can't really be paying certain employees in one system and others in another system. But we thought if we could set up to where for a year, we would run what if we were doing merit, and how would that come out, and how would they be paid? And there's some, some folks feel that it ultimately would not cost us any more money. Again, my worry is that while I have very high expectations in this district, we have a lot of people that meet those high expectations. You know, not some, it's, you know, I mean...
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I was aware of this going up, and I'm sure a lot of other people...
I see what you, yeah, I think, you know, we forget that, you know, whether you're a board member or me or my staff, we're involved in the conversation all the time, so we probably wouldn't pick up on that. But probably if somebody was in the room not knowing all the background, they probably, I could see where they would think that it just meant that from this point forward, we were merit paid. But we're a long ways away from actually implementing it. But it's definitely an agreed-upon plan to test implementation. And then I think the intent is that if we tested it and it worked, that we would implement. We've got about six minutes. Been great questions tonight, really good questions. Extremely thankful for you all coming out on such a beautiful night. Would you like me to sing?
Yes, sir.
Johnny Cash? Or the Beatles? I'll pass, I'll spare you. I'll tell you, next time I've got a gig, you can come watch me. Anything? Anything else? Okay, oh, Peggy.
Two more compliments.
All right.
Two more compliments to the district. One is an answer to the math situation over there. I mean, the teachers during A and P, the kids can request to go talk to their teachers to get special help on their math or their English or whatever it is. And then also, they have different days that teachers stay to tutor kids. And so those are things that it's up to your child and the parent to use those things, those resources, but, right. And so, you know, so with that being said, I think that those are great things that the school does. And the other thing is, an answer to the, about the, I'm going to call it mandatory busing, but it's not, the bus-in. I was a victim of, I call it a victim of mandatory busing. I was in the city in the 80s when they forced us to switch schools. But, so with that, I was very resistant to this, very, very, very much, until I educated myself, thanks to Dr. Knoske and listened to him, and he softened me a lot, because I was bitter about what I went through. But my children completely embrace the kids that are there at their school. They don't see any difference, they don't see, and it was a very positive thing for my kids, I think. Not that, not that that made a huge difference, but they didn't even notice it, I don't think. So that was kudos to the district for all of those things, and everyone embracing them and...
I did have a call not too long ago from somebody who had heard, this is kind of interesting, but had heard there were discipline issues with a specific child and that that child was a student from Riverview Gardens. And I think the caller's intent was good, but the more I kind of asked questions back, I think they realized how really ridiculous the questioning was, because, you know, when we accept kids as our own, which it's the only way we can be successful with children is when we have them in our system, accept them as our own, and that's exactly what we did. We embraced the kids coming from Riverview. There going to be a cross-section, just like our kids. And what I said to this parent, I said, "Have you called the superintendent before when kids that reside in the county become a discipline issue?" And the parent said, real quick, "Well, no, I haven't done that." And as they started thinking about it, realized, "Well, these are our kids, so we get a cross-section. We've got kids that do well academically from Riverview, we've got kids that don't do well academically from Riverview, we've got kids that are never a behavior problem, we've got kids that are behavior problems." And guess what? Kids that reside here. We've got kids that do well academically, kids that don't do well academically, we've got kids with behavior problems, kids without behavior problems. So kids with special needs, kids without special needs. So it's really just a cross-section, and we can't have, you know, it goes back to that whole earlier conversation, we really can't have a different set of expectations for children that are our own but reside in a different zip code at night. So I appreciate your comments. Okay. There's two minutes, if there's one more. All right. Thank you all very, very much for coming. Have a great evening. We will plan to have one more, probably in May. We'll...
Not on the corner of my...
Thank you. Yes.